Commission President, we are now live.
All right, ready to go.
It's Mike then.
Prior to tonight's meeting, you'll have an invocation offered by Commissioner Waddington, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God our Father, as we gather for this meeting this evening, give us the guidance and wisdom to make the proper decisions, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to that movement which stands one nation under God, in the middle of all.
Everybody's off, okay. But I think we got it.
Ms. Cresser, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Poole?
Present.
Mr. Harris, ask to be excused. Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Minzer? Is muted, but I see, okay. And Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Can I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Harris, please?
No move.
Second. Got a motion and a second, without objection, the motion will be approved, and here is no objection. That motion is approved, and Commissioner Harris. Commissioners, you have before you are minutes from our meeting of May the 11th, 2020, and our meeting of May 18th, 2020, work session. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington?
I move that we accept the minutes of the May 11th meeting and the May 18th work session meeting in dispense for the formal reading. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and here is no objection, that motion is... Tonight, we have a public hearing on CDGP Fiscal Year 2020 Annual Action Plan and Amendments with COVID-19. This public hearing is going to be conducted by Ms. Waddington, our Director of Planning. As this is a public meeting, I will remind you that any questions regarding this plan can be put in writing or emailed to Clerk Cresser, and they will be addressed by staff. Ms. Waddington, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Again, yes.
I'm trying to just share my screen, Mr. President. Can any of you see my screen?
No.
I see a cabin. Yep, there you go.
You can see it now?
Got it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President, members of commission. This is the second public hearing for the FY '20 Community Development Block Grant. The plan includes both our normal allocation of CDBG-CV totaling... I'm sorry, can you see the screen still? Because I've lost it.
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. The plan includes both our normal allocation for CDBG as well as our CDBG-CV allocation The CDBG-CV, which stands for coronavirus dollars, are used to... must be used to help prevent the spread and assist those affected by the virus. The money is one part of the CARES Act, and HUD has communicated that this round is the first round of CDBG-CV, and there will be a second round awarded soon. The normal public participation process was disrupted due to COVID-19. As such, HUD has issued a memo of blanket waivers to expedite the public participation process to help get the funds into communities as quickly as possible. In order to use the HUD waivers, communities are required to amend their citizen participation plans and strategic plans. And I'm sorry to ask, but are my slides moving because I don't have them in front of me?
We have exactly the same slide we started with, just the announcement of the CDGP Fiscal Year 2020 Annual Action Plan.
Wow.
Are you in commission chambers seeing anything different? There you go, now we've got a red slide.
Slide says public housing.
Yep.
Now it says HUD.
Are you seeing...
Citizens Participation Plan Amendments.
Must be on her phone.
Okay. No, I'm not on my phone, I'm actually up in my office right now. So can you see this now? Says HUD has advised, is the slide?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
So the amendments that are being proposed as part of the Citizen Participation Plan is removal of the Public and Consolidated Plan Advisory Committee participation, including notice and the review period during times of declaration of emergency and/or when it is necessary to expedite a response to a disaster. As it relates to amendment of the Consolidated Plan and/or an annual action plan, the following is being amended: Reduction of the public notice requirement from 10 days to 7 days; Reduction of the public comment period from 30 days to 5 days; Removal of the normally required CPAC meeting, notice, review time, and recommendation; and lastly, provision for an option of utilizing virtual meeting platforms when emergency disaster situations do not allow for public gatherings. In regard to the proposed amendments to the five-year consolidated plan, there will be inclusion of CDBG-CV references throughout the document, as follows: Within the needs assessment and priority needs narratives, there will be mention of inclusion of persons, organizations, and businesses impacted by COVID-19. It will include anticipated resources of the CDBG-CV funds in the amount of $437,328 to be used in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. And the goal and goal description sections throughout the document will provide information in regard to the number of persons and businesses which would be assisted. Moving on to the proposed Formulary '20 CDBG Annual Action Plan, again, this plan is for July 1st, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. You see in front of you the CDBG annual allocation versus the CDBG-CV Round 1 allocation. The dollar amounts are shown there. The annual action... The annual allocation is $743,396, and the CDBG-CV allocation is $437,328. Both maintain a 20% administration cap, both require 70% of the funds to be used on low moderate income persons. The normal CDBG allocation maintains a 15% public service cap. The additional CDBG-CV money does not have a public service cap. The generally permitted uses of CDBG funds are housing, public improvements, public services, flight elimination, and economic development. And the CDBG-CV funds must be used to help prevent the spread of the virus or mitigate the effects of COVID-19 on persons, businesses, et cetera. Moving on to the proposed activities and associated budget for the 2020 plan, which again will include both the normal allocation of CDBG as well as CDBG-CV. First, starting with the CDBG funds, the proposed program administration dollar amount is $148,000. $10,000 is proposed for fair housing, $270,000 for public facilities, which will include, as cost allow, for the Hayes Avenue Safety Improvements Project, reconstruction of two public parking lots, and the Shoreline Park Erosion Control Project. There is $110,396 slotted for residential demolition, $50,000 proposed for acquisition of lighted structures, $150,000 proposed for code enforcement in low mod income areas, census tracts throughout the city, $5,000 proposed for the summer park programs, spring and winter break camps through the City Recreation Department. And now moving into the CDBG-CV activities and budget, which is outlined in red in this presentation, $87,465 for program administration, $54,863 for public facility upgrades. This would include purchase of personal protective equipment for employees and shields, public facility safety upgrades, anything that would come along to help prevent the spread of the virus and to protect employees and the public. $30,000 proposed for a subgrant to Erie County Senior Center for their Meals on Wheels program, $15,000 as a grant to OGO for their mobile food pantry, $50,000 for a food pantry to be determined as far as the organization. The city still needs to put out a request for applications. This money could go to one organization or multiple organizations. $50,000 for youth programming. Due to the lack of and limited access to youth programs because of the virus, we thought this was important to provide programming for the youth practicing social distancing guidelines, yet allowing them to get out and enjoy some programming. And lastly, $150,000 for direct financial assistance to businesses that have been impacted by the virus. This would be by way of small grants to Sandusky businesses. As far as the public process, it began with a CPAC meeting in February, and we did have our first public hearing at City Commission in February. And then COVID-19 occurred, which halted our public process because we could not meet with the public, and we were also awaiting word from HUD in regard to the CDBG-CV funds. So now we have... We're moving forward, we are having our second public hearing, which we provided notice for, and we allowed for public comments by providing the draft online. We did have a couple public comments, and I'm going to read them into the meeting minutes. The first is from Sharon Johnson. She states, "Looking at the CDBG-CV breakdown on the money, I am having trouble with $87,465 for administration costs, which seems a bit high to administrate a small amount of money for the CDBG-CV fund. Is there a further estimate of the breakdown on how you arrived or calculated the figure?" The city's response is that the funds can reimburse any staff time spent on general administration, clerical work, and time spent on any of the specific activities related to CDBG-CV. Funds can also be spent on supplies and any legal or professional services if needed. The second comment was from Commissioner Poole, who stated, "Section 12, $50,000 for an unnamed food pantry?", question mark. "Are there no existing pantries in town? I have concerns about $50,000 just floating without a designated use. I also need some support information justifying the administrative costs in the requests." The city's answer is that the city is required to take in applications from organizations. While there wasn't time to complete the process prior to submitting the plan to HUD, since HUD is pressing for communities to put these plans in action as soon as possible, many communities are taking in applications after the plan is submitted. Further, the contract with the organization or organizations would have to come to City Commission, and we do assume that we will have local organizations that are applying. In regard to the administration costs, that was answered to Ms. Johnson's question. So that's all I have for the presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Commissioners, questions for Ms. Waddington? Any questions for Ms. Waddington, Commissioner? Ms. Waddington, early on in your presentation, it appears to me it would be a true statement that the federal government is going out of their way to make this easier to access, spread the money more broadly and in a variety of ways in response to this virus. I think that's the gist of why we've got additional money, and they're certainly making it easier for us to access those dollars and less strings attached to it, it appears.
Through you, Mr. President, that's correct. They want to get the money out as quickly as possible, and they have loosened up some of the regulations to try to help the community.
We are certainly thankful for those dollars. Only wish they were about 20 times that amount, but we are certainly thankful for those. Any additional questions, Commissioners, in this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Poole.
Yes. The question regarding pantries, it still is an answer to explain why you did what you did, but are there or are there not prospective food pantries in Sandusky that might put in applications for this money?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole. I apologize, I thought I did state that we anticipate that there will be local organizations that will put in applications for this. And I do know for a fact that the Erie County Senior Center will be putting in an application as well.
Okay, your anticipation beyond the Erie County Senior Center, is there additional pantries that you know of in Sandusky that might do it? Or is your anticipation based on you just... You hope that when the money is available, somebody will start a pantry? That's what my question was, is are there facilities in Sandusky that might already be operating that would want to... Would apply for this money?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole. Yes, I would assume that OGO would be putting in an application. I know this is a high need, and a lot of communities are looking at food pantry as an activity that they would like to fund. So yes, we fully anticipate multiple applications locally for this, and I would assume, but I have not confirmed with, OGO, that they will also be putting in an application.
Okay, this COVID money is new money. These additional anticipated entities that might put in for this new money, did they also apply but not receive money for the... Prior to this?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole. Erie County Senior Center applied, and OGO applied for the normal CDBG funds. So they were funded... OGO was funded fully, and the Senior Center was funded almost fully in the proposed plan this year. After speaking with HUD, their need fits the CDBG-CV funds so well, we moved those applications over to CDBG-CV. But they normally don't ask for all the money they need because they know we have limited funds, but I know that they could use extra money. So I do fully anticipate that they're going to be asking for funds. I will say that if for some reason these organizations do not apply, they do not need more money, we can amend this and ship that $50,000 into another activity. Further, when we're getting our CDBG-CV, the second round of funds, I believe that we will have to amend the plan yet again, and at that time, we could easily amend this. So I just bring that up to let you know that this can be changed if there's no organizations that would like to apply for these funds.
Okay, I'm sorry, I may have forgotten, but what's the timeframe for this request and us awarding this $50,000, this food money?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole. I would like to get this out as soon as I can possibly put the application process together. That being said, I give myself a goal of having this application out within two weeks, and we could award as soon as the City Commission approves a contract. So realistically, I would say within 45 days.
Okay, that's fine. And just the last thing about that, in terms of our process, you mentioned some entities that could possibly do this. Is this a matter of they have to find out about it through the register or whatever, or do we actually work with the community and send out information to alert them that this money is available, like Care and Share perhaps, and whatever other organizations are in the community?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole. I would do both. I would definitely advertise, and I would reach out directly to organizations within the city limits.
Okay, I... Thank you. I recognize advertising, it covers us from what we're expected legally to do in a town this size where we are a small community. I would think that we would be making sure that all the groups in town that are possibly eligible, that first of all, that we would know about them and would be reaching out to make sure that they're aware of this opportunity. The last thing about with regard to administrative expensive... Well, we wanted to ask this. I presume that when we give money... Well, let me ask you, when we give money to, say, Volunteers of America or the Senior Center, does it go in a lump sum? Do they send us a bill every month and ask for more money? How's that process work?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole. Their money is distributed to them on a reimbursement basis, so they have to provide us with documentation on the expenses, be it payroll, cancel checks, invoices, bank statements. All of those things are required before we can reimburse them.
Okay.
And they usually go monthly.
Okay, every month. So essentially, the number of programs that we are supporting looks to be... Whatever, you can count those numbers. Once a month, we get a report from them, which I presume we review for accuracy? Is that how the process goes? And compliance?
Through you, Mr. President, to Commissioner Poole. Some organizations choose not to do monthly, they choose to do quarterly. It all depends on their budgets and what they can support. But yes, when they submit their invoices, we both check the documents that they're submitting for reimbursement on, and they also give us a report which details out the activities that they did. If, for example, if it's OGO, where they distributed their food, how many individuals they benefited, that information is all taken in. And then we also provide, or we conduct, an onsite visit twice a year to confirm the original documents at their site with what we've been given through either email or the mail.
Okay, thank you. And the reason I ask is I... From what you've described, and there could be more to this, the question about why we're taking 20% of the money that could easily go toward the programs themselves to help the citizens, $87,000 in one and the... Whatever the number is with the other seems to be a significant amount of money for reviewing paperwork that has already been done by the recipients of the funding. An onsite check can't be more than a day's worth of work, a year or whatever, shouldn't be much more than that. I just... Which was why I sent the question to you. It seems that we're taking way too much money off the top that could go to actually being of value to the community. So if you have something else to add, reviewing paperwork that comes in once a month or once a quarter from the limited number of people that we're dealing with does not seem like a full-time job worth 100, 200 and some thousand dollars, even though it's spread over two years. It seems a bit much. The staff we pay to do a lot of things, I mean, that's more than salaries for a full-time person to do this. So that's just my thoughts on it. I'll listen to what you have to say to say that there's actually several hundred thousand dollars worth of administrative work here before I decide about how to vote about this. Thank you.
Any additional questions, Commissioners? If not, I will declare this public hearing closed. Thank you, Ms. Waddington, for the presentation. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, we're holding this commission meeting electronically, and Commissioners and staff are in attendance through an internet hookup in a variety of safe locations. We've asked our audience to either submit their questions or their comments in writing to our commission clerk, who will answer those that pertain to legislation as that legislation comes before us, will provide a response to any other audience members from the appropriate staff. I'd also like to acknowledge that the two participating Commissioners in the commission chambers are doing so with appropriate social distancing. Thank you for that, Commissioners. Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, the motion will be approved, and here is no objection, that motion is approved. On to consent, the consent agenda. Commissioners, we have nine items on our consent agenda. Are there any of these items that you'd like removed and placed on the regular agenda? If not, Ms. Cresser, will you read the consent agenda items?
Yes, Mr. Brady. Item A is a grant application with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the calendar year 2021 Rural Transit Program and for the fiscal year 2021 Ohio Transit Partnership Program funding for the Sandusky Transit System. Item B is an amendment to the contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the urban paving project, which was approved by motion at the May 11 City Commission meeting. Item C is the annual submerged lands lease payment to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for the Chesapeake Lofts Condominium Association. Item D is the annual submerged lands lease payment to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources for Battery Park Marina. Item E is to accept two parcels by gift of deed through the land bank program. Item F is the purchase and sale agreement for one parcel through the land bank program. Item G is ratification of the COVID-19 supplemental grant submission to the United States Department of Homeland Security for the 2020 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program. Item H is ratification of the COVID-19 grant submission to the United States Department of Justice for the Sandusky Municipal Court. And item I is the ratification of the COVID-19 grant submission to the United States Department of Justice for the Sandusky Police Department.
Commissioners, have you heard these ordinances and resolutions? How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move to accept the consent agenda items A through I, and declaring that all ordinances and/or resolutions as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Got a motion and a second discussion, Commissioners.
Ms. Cresser, will you call the roll on the motion, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Now on the ordinances and resolutions.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Minzer?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Those ordinance and resolutions are passed. We will now turn to our items on the regular agenda, of which we have three. Those ordinance and resolutions are passed. We will now turn to our items on the regular agenda, of which we have three. Ms. Crestor, will you present item number one?
Yes, item number one is a resolution approving and adopting an amendment, or I'm sorry, an amended citizen participation plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program, and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, what is your pro?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this resolution under suspension of the rules in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Crestor, will you call the roll, please, on the motion?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meindler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Now on the resolution.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meindler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That resolution is passed. Ms. Crestor, item number two, please.
Yes, item number two is an ordinance approving an amendment to the city's five-year consolidated plan for the Community Development Block Grant Program from July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2024, and authorizing and directing the city manager to submit the amended five-year action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
We've got a motion, and there've been two seconds. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poole.
The individual things identified in this proposed amendment, I will need to accept and say I'll vote yes for. I do just want to note that my, that previously I did not note it when we made the original acceptance of the CDBG funding, that I just wanted to go on the record that I think the amount of money that we set aside for administration in the future needs to be adjusted down so that the money can be spent on the people that actually need it. But I will accept the amendments that are proposed.
Additional discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
I disagree with the insinuation that the money is being wasted on staff. These are essential jobs that need to be undertaken, and the federal government has provided latitude in order to be able to provide funding to make all of this happen. That is, that we are operating under a set of regulations that provides a cap in terms of the amount that is available for administration, and that has been time-tested over a very long period of time in many, many communities, and it's been found to be a reasonable amount. So I wanted to make that part noted. Thank you.
Additional discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
That be Commissioner Poole?
Yes. What I stated wasn't an insinuation. It was a statement about how I feel about it. It wasn't an insinuation. The government put a cap of 20%. That simply cuts off how much you can take. My concern is that we have taken more than is necessary to administrate the program. And the question when I asked to begin with, the answer was not justifying why we've assigned so much money to the administration when, in my opinion, it takes much less of staff time than the money that's been, that we've allocated ourselves for that takes to administer the program. And the answer given at the very beginning simply recited that we're allowed to take it. That's what that answer was. When I asked why and the justification for why we're taking so much, simply reciting that the government gives you, allows you to take that much doesn't justify it. That money could just, we could just as easily identify what it actually costs in times and hours to review monthly 10 pieces, 10 reports from these folks of the money they spend, assign that dollar amount to the hours spent, and spend the rest of the money actually on the people that the federal government sent it here to make their lives better. So let me be real clear about what that's about. It wasn't insinuating. That's what I feel about, and I said it. I was saying it out loud.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray?
If I may note, there is no evidence on the table that the money that's being spent is in excess of what's required. That is, if an individual Commissioner has concerns about that, there are many, many opportunities for us to email staff and collect information instead of putting them on the spot in the course of a meeting and demanding information that isn't available at people's fingertips. So I feel that the amount that is spent has been appropriate, and I will be supporting the legislation.
Ms. Crestor, you pull the commission on the motion, please.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meindler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meindler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Crestor, you present item number three, please.
Yes, item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to accept an entitlement grant in the amount of $1,180,724 total Community Development Block Grant Fund for the program year of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, and to submit to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development a fiscal year 2020 One-Year Action Plan, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
There've been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman. No, Mr. Chairman. Yep.
Yeah, Commissioner Poole.
Yes, this is new money, and as I stated before, I feel that we're allotting too much of it for administration. And let me suggest that, yes, there's nothing on the table to indicate that because the evidence is contained and controlled by the city. And if the staff does not present it, how much time they actually spent working on these projects, then I guess the evidence will never be there. And this wasn't brought up at a meeting as a surprise. They were told ahead of time, and the answer I got for the question was not complete from what was not satisfactory to me, so I asked it again. Just stating that information that you may or may not have but should have collected wasn't presented to justify the expenditure isn't sufficient by, doesn't erase the fact that we simply said, "The government says we can take 20%. Let's just take it." And it's an issue for me because it takes away from what the money was sent to us for. What we spend it on is important to me. Thank you.
Additional discussion, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Murray?
I will point out that for some 20 years, the city of Sandusky has been audited, and we have never been found to be wasting any money, to squandered any money or to have any money stolen, not one dime. We've gone through all of these audits with flying colors, and to suggest that we're spending money inappropriately without a shred of evidence to suggest so is incorrect, in my view.
Ms. Crestor, you pull--
Hold on, Mr. Chairman, I'm not done. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Poole, you are done. You've spoken on this issue enough.
Actually, I get to--
Not to debate. Commissioner Poole, you're out of order. I ask you to stand down. Ms. Crestor--
Point of order, point of order. I'm allowed to speak twice for five minutes each time on each thing brought before us. I've only spoken once on this. If you want to bring in a law director to tell you that you're wrong, that's fine.
I guess it just seems like you've spoken a dozen times because you continue to say the same thing, Commissioner Poole.
I simply responded to Commissioner Murray. And to point out that when we are audited by HUD, they audit for compliance. They don't come in and judge whether or not what we spend is wasted or not. That's not what they're here for. That's why you have no evidence of that. Taking 20% off the top is legal, so we're not out of compliance. I realize that. But it's an arbitrary decision that we, as a commission and a community, determine how much money we take the slide, take off the table for administration of the program and how much money we send to the program to be, to benefit the citizens. So yes, you're absolutely correct, Mr. Murray. It's just a moot point. It's irrelevant. I'm suggesting that we do not spend the amount of time, the $235,000 of staff time, giving out this little bit, giving out this money, and that's all I'm saying. And it has little to do with legal or whatever. It's a judgment call, and the fact that HUD didn't find us in compliance and you didn't steal anything is not the point. It's our decision to say, "We're moving the money over here. It's not going to the citizens," and not justify it with anything other than, "Oh, it was legal."
Ms. Crestor, you pull the commission on the motion.
Mr. Chairman.
That was Mr. Meindler.
Would I be out of order to ask a question?
Certainly.
Could I ask Ms. Byington to speak about--
I got, I did not get any audio from that.
Did you hear anything?
No. My camera is upside down, and I'm trying to speak. Can I, can I ask Ms. Byington to speak about the tracking of her time and the staff's time?
Ms. Byington, are you with us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Through you, to Commissioner. CDBG does require, unless you're an individual, which we don't have any here that are 100% paid by CDBG, we are required to track our time, the hours spent on CDBG and what we're doing. So that is one of the things that HUD reviews when they come in. Also, I'd like to point out that if we do not utilize all of our administration money, that it rolls over to the next year and is put into an activity because at no point can we have more than 20% on the books. So if we, for any reason, had $10,000 or more, whatever number, it will roll over to the next year. The administration dollars go for things other than staff salaries as well, but I'd be more than happy to show and sit down with any of the Commissioners or public in regard to the things that are considered administration. It's not just paying the bills when they come in. There's a lot of hours that goes into this and a lot of, a lot of paperwork procurement, federal regulations that we have to follow before we even get the money as we're putting the money out and after the money is spent as far as documentation. So it's quite a bit of work, so that's why HUD allows you up to 20%. And I just wanted to let you know that I'm here if anybody wants to sit down and look at what we do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Byington. Additional questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Twine.
It's a little, a little daunting that we're spending this much time trying to distribute money to people in the community that need it. I understand the need for public hearings, the opportunities for questions and answers and those types of things. I am baffled by the assumption that our staff is wasting administrative costs or time or money implementing the programs with the money that we get from the federal government. I appreciate the answers that Ms. Byington provided. I think she's been very clear. I think the staff has done a wonderful job in explaining what they would like to do with these funds with the community. And so, of course, I'm in full support of the CDBG legislation, and I hope we can get this passed. Thank you.
Ms. Crestor, will you pull the commission on the motion?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meindler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Meindler?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Poole?
No.
That ordinance is passed.
Mr. Chairman.
Move our regular--
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, after the legislation's passed, I can speak again.
Oh, wonderful.
Figured you'd like that. With regard to the, you know, I listened to what Mrs. Byington indicated about having numbers and that they track and all of what she said. Had she simply sent that to me ahead of time and the numbers worked out, we could have avoided all of this. If you got the information, just give it to me. Thank you.
That concludes our regular agenda items, and we'll turn to our city manager for his report. Mr. Wilbster, you are onstage.
Good evening, Commissioners, audience, and staff. Before I get started tonight, I just wanted to say a big thank you to the city Commissioners who voted for and who have supported through great lengths of conversation and dialogue, the planning for, and then ultimately the financing of the construction process and now the opening of the Jackson Street Pier. I, like many of you, had a chance to get out there this weekend and to take a look at the new pier, and there are so many on the city commission, there are so many on the staff, there are so many project partners, et cetera, that had a chance to be a part of making this happen in such a special way. And I know we'll have a later date to single out those and our project partners in the community for making that possible. But I just want to pause, and I think the Sandusky Register did an amazing editorial to talk a little bit about how difficult it was to get that project done on so many different levels. But I want to thank you for the political courage that you demonstrated because the reality is, in the last several decades in Sandusky, there's no way that project gets done. And a little bit like tonight, I think you would have found that there's a lot of talking, a lot of reading, that we can point out flaws or questions and really paralyze ourselves from doing anything. And I think this commission and this staff have overcome that idea of criticism as leadership, and ultimately, that project speaks for itself. So those of you who haven't gotten out there, I urge you to do it. And as a reminder to those of you who are listening, that is what this city is capable of, when we get beyond criticism and we get into doing things after taking calculated risks and engaging our community. So thank you all for your support on that. I'm really proud of it, and I look forward to thanking those of you who are individually a part of it at a later date. With that, I'll move on to donations. First, we have a donation of $25 received from James and Barbara Tom for the K-9 Fund. I'd ask for a motion to accept that donation.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing that objection, that motion is approved with our thanks.
Secondly, Restore Pro donated time and material to disinfect all of the cruisers in station for the police department. We appreciate this kind and generous donation. I'd ask for a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second discussion. Without objection, that motion will be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved.
Moving on to public works. Due to rain and inclement weather for the past few weeks, the completion of many projects, including the Jackson Street Pier, Shoreline Drive, Buchanan Street, Pier Street, McCartney Road, have caused the construction schedules to be extended past-- to be extended past expected completion dates. Please bear with us as we strive to ensure we do not compromise quality in any of these projects. I had a chance to drive down Buchanan Street today, and it's looking nearly finished. It's such a huge improvement from, from driving down there in the past. So, please do bear with us. There've been some pretty extreme circumstances we've been dealing with, but we can't wait to finish those projects and unveil those for the community. Secondarily, the restrooms at the Jackson Street Pier are now open to the public from 7:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m. every day and will be maintained by city staff. The restroom at the Marina will be open during normal business hours for that facility. Will be maintained by Marina staff. All other restroom buildings will be remaining closed until further notice. Next, the floating kayak ramp at the High Creek Wildlife Area has been installed. However, access may be dependent on water levels. Please be careful. And then finally, staff continues to develop a plan for potential local street resurfacing project. We're going to bring back specific information once we work through some design and selection information based on various funding levels. We're also looking at if there's an ability for us to tap into low interest rates to spread the cost of those out over time, as we know that, you know, waiting on roads for a few years and paying cash, those roads continue to deteriorate and get more expensive due to inflation. So, we're hopeful to be able to bring that back to you later this year. Moving out to the planning department, Sandusky Transit will resume collecting normal fares beginning June 1st. The regular planning commission meeting for June 24th is tentatively scheduled for 4:30 p.m. The Board of Zoning Appeals meeting for June 18th is scheduled for 4:30 p.m. The Landmark Commission meeting for June 17th is scheduled for 4:30 p.m. The Arts and Culture Commission meeting for June 16th has been tentatively scheduled for 5:15 p.m. We have not yet determined whether these meetings are going to be virtual or to take place directly at City Hall. And finally, Sandusky Transit will resume collecting normal fares beginning on June 1st or next week. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and I hope everyone has a great evening.
Commissioners, questions for the city manager? No questions for the city manager. Next item on our agenda is any items of old business.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddick.
I talked with a couple commissioners the last few weeks. I guess now more than ever, going forward, I think most of our residents and the city of Sandusky employees understand the dynamics, the possibly losing funding for workers and that. But right now, I think more than ever, we hired a city manager and a finance director to manage the money and the layoffs. And I feel, going forward, I've talked to some of the city employees, that we need one voice. I'm certain all city commissioners would have various opinions about layoffs and money. But how about a little hope, especially right now? We've been dragged through this for about 10 weeks, and I've had employees, one particular stopped me getting a coffee at 7-Eleven, is worried about, I just purchased a fairly new car, he's got a couple kids, and will he have a job? And I, you know, I never made any recommendations. I think that should just come from the top. We hired Mr. Whipser for that position, and unless you're a doctor or a CPA, then I don't feel like I'm qualified, and I don't know how many on the commission are, to make comments about that publicly. I think everyone knows it's bad, and if you've been in bad positions before, I have certainly in my early life, that you get it right away. You don't need a millionaire telling you it's going to get bad and it's really cloudy. And I, I think most people, most of the residents get it. Now, I'm just going to leave it at that. I've had, and I'm not going to mention the commissioners, if they want to put them under microscope, fine. But I think that's why we hired Mr. Whipser and for him to convey one thing, and then if the, our city employees are asking commissioners, and I, I don't have an answer, and I've told them that, you know. I, years and years ago, you know, I've been laid off my lifetime, and it's tough. And I feel for them. But going forward, I'm, I remain hopeful. I hope I hear by July 1st, I hope I hear the train making its noise over at Cedar Point in my backyard, in my house. You know, I'm still hopeful that they get open. Will it be perfect? Probably not. But, you know, as Dr. Atton says, we're all in this together, and I feel that way about Sandusky. But let's offer a little bit of hope and encouragement. You know, it's, right now, it's really vital and important. I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
So, old business, Commissioner Twine?
I agree. We hired Eric to manage and administrate the day-to-day operations of the city. I find him to be very capable. He has developed a wonderful working relationship with, with me as an individual commissioner, but he's also done that with the staff that he has working for him. Yes, we are facing some daunting times, and it's, it's difficult at times. But Eric has shown himself again to be capable and willing to, to make the hard decisions. I, you know, he has made, had to make some very difficult decisions. And I would never want to second guess what he's done or why he's done it. Whenever I've had questions or concerns, all I have to do is call Eric up, and I, and he responds to whatever it is that I'm asking him. So, Eric has the full support. He has had it, and he continues to have it. And I do want him to know that publicly. Again, as we face some, some very difficult times, some very difficult decisions. And again, me individually as a commissioner, I wanted to know in public that I support him and his abilities to run the day-to-day operations of the city.
Any additional items of old business, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Meiner?
I love Dave's passion and Naomi's as well, but Dave's been around long enough to remember '08, you know, through '11. And we've had tough times before, and, and we need a leader to get us through this. And I think Eric's the guy that's going to do it. Anybody could be a leader in great times. It's going to take a leader like Eric to get us through bad times. And I think none of us are, that know enough about the city and run the day-to-day operations than the department has. It's up to the department has to figure out how they can get the most out of their employees, most done, and, and it doesn't need any interference with hard-time public officials. They can get it done. And Eric, Eric puts a lot of hours in, a lot of time. My confidence is in Eric. We're going to, it's going to be rough, but he'll get us through this. I just want to say that. I'm just going to give kudos to Dave because I watch him. When he says that, it's from the heart, man. Dave, Dave talks from the heart. So, I agree with Dave.
Any additional items of old business, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Murray?
I couldn't agree more with my colleagues. Eric is the one, along with his team, to make the decisions about where the cuts are going to be made. And while we may have some questions along the way, that we ask him quietly about this priority or that priority, undermining it publicly would be a mistake, and I don't think any of us want to do that, especially given his track record. So, I, I think he has the commission's full support.
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead.
No, no, after you, Commissioner, please.
No, no, you're fine. Go ahead.
So, through the commission president to the commissioners, I'm just getting a little nervous. This seems to have turned somehow into a vote, vote of confidence for me as city manager, and that usually means I'll be out within a week or two. So, I, I'm totally joking about that. But I, I do appreciate the comments and the, and the confidence in, in my ability and the staff's ability to do this. But I will also say, we greatly welcome your feedback, and, and you are the elected representatives of the city. And so, as we get into choices, difficult choices that we'll have to make, as to any reductions in services or staffing levels or anything along those lines, we do welcome your expertise in those questions. And I think by and large, your comments and those questions have been appropriate and are welcomed by me. So, I just want to make sure that folks know, I have felt a wonderful working relationship with the commission in, in times before our momentum, during our momentum, and now while that momentum is running. But I do greatly appreciate your support, and I couldn't do any of this without a great staff and that support. So, thank you very much.
Eric, that's well said. Thank you. I think, you know, what we're all suffering from right now is a lack of clarity. None of us can see what lies down the road or around the bend. We will get through this. I think it's our obligation to not make the calls that our city manager is destined to make, but it's our obligation to give hope to a city. And that, that's what my monitor is going to be about, has been about for the last eight, will be about for the next eight weeks. And that is, people that we're going to get through this, going to figure it out, that there is a light at the end of this tunnel, and it's not a trap coming right at them. So, I, I appreciate all your comments, and I appreciate your support for our city manager. I certainly share that.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Poole?
May I suggest that the progress that we've made over the last four years has been a result of the democratic process, which is a matter of seven of us have been elected to represent many different opinions in the community. And it is, it is, has worked. It's not that this wasn't an accident. No one, in a democracy, that's just the way it works. Opposing opinions come to the table, and the charter dictates that we must do that here in an open meeting. So, the concept of the staff finding it difficult or thinking that, that they're not appreciated, they need to recognize that they are paid to run, to make sure the train runs on time, and that there's going to be differing opinions about the decisions that they made. I agree totally with what Eric just said. Eric has a good understanding of how this works. The, I agree with, with Commissioner Waddington that there should be one voice. I agree that individual commissioners have no business making, directing staff to do specific things. But we only have, we have what is left, provided us in terms of opportunities to give our input. We represent people in the community who all don't agree. It's simple and straightforward as, as that. The, and I'll point out, it's the manager's idea, and the manager makes recommendations to us based on his knowledge and expertise of managing the departments. The decisions of what departments provide the community are supposed to come from us. In other words, do we have more, a lot of firefighters that, to, the number of firefighters that we have, based on what we want them to accomplish, that ultimately is decided by us. Now, I don't need to tell you how many firefighters there are, but we are supposed to decide the level of service that we would like to spend the taxpayers' money on fire service. The manager goes out and determines for us, determines how many people it takes to do that, and hires the folks to do it. The concept here, if you look at the charter, the charter says that the city commission directs and supervises the city manager. How we do that should be with as much hands-off as possible. But I understand and fully and will stand by the concept that the direction the city goes is determined by the city commission because we're elected by the commissioners. And I'm happy to take the manager's suggestions on anything, and you'll find, I vote yes with you folks on probably 85% of the votes. But I'm not standing down because I represent people who do not benefit from some things that the manager thinks is good for all. Doesn't make him a bad guy. Doesn't make you bad people. But I assure you, I'm not being shamed, embarrassed, or talked about, or talked out of stepping up and speaking up for those who don't benefit from everything you do. And thank you. And Eric, yes, you do very well on a lot of things. I just don't find it to be perfect. And so, I bring it up when I say, when, when I think so. But thank you.
Items of new business, Commissioners? Are there any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddick?
We're meeting at the Shelby Street Boat Ramp. We've been fortunate so far this year on the litter cleanups. We've had as few as, I think, six, and as many as eight or nine. But we're doing the waterfront cleanup. We meet at the Shelby Street Boat Ramp at 9:00 on Saturday. And then hopefully, if we get six or eight again, we can send some down to the Battery Park area and then work towards Jackson Street Pier. So, I've already noticed, my walks around on Shoreline, a lot of cigarette butts and them little, I don't know what kind of cigars they have in the middle. They look like a pencil. I've seen five or six of them. So, hopefully, we get some of that cleaned up.
Is that start time? What, what is the start time for that? Is it 9:00?
9:00. We meet at the Shelby Street Boat Ramp. It's a waterfront cleanup, so.
Got it. Okay, thank you. Items of additional new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes, Commissioner Waddick.
Like in a little follow-up, you know, I'd heard, I guess what really stoked my fire was that we, the Washington parks may not get cut, we may not have flowers. And you know what? This community's got a lot of really neat people that, and I found that out through the litter program, that'll get out and help. All you got to do is ask them. I stopped, I've talked to Mary Jane at the Greenhouse, Bill and Barbara, Bill, been downtown doing stuff. And they get it. And, and I guess that's my whole concept or why I brought this up originally on their old business was, there's people out there, they understand, they get it, and they'll help out. I know it's not going to be perfect down there, but if we can get 10 or 15 people helping the planning, and, and I know some of the employees are upset. I'd probably be upset too if I worked for the city or worked in that department and was one of the ones cut. But for, right now, the best we can do, it's a patch on a bad tire. And I'm just, I'm going to remain hopeful, and my glass is more than half-full, that we, we dig out of this sometime this summer. So, that's how I'm looking at it. And I'm thankful for all the volunteers. I wish some way we could develop a plan to award, or give them some type of recognition for all their hours, because we have a lot of people, not only in leagues, baseball leagues, basketball leagues, when the Y was open, it volunteered time that didn't get paid. Go around your parks and look. People that pick trash up, there's more than my group. There's a group that goes down Columbus Ave and, you know, through downtown. So, I just wish there's some way, I guess, just to say thanks to them. Thank you.
Commissioner Waddick, I, I agree with your, with your thoughts on that. I, I think a lot, until you're in these positions that we're in, you don't really realize that this city runs on the backs of, of a lot of volunteers. Nothing is more evident than, than we go, what we're going through right now with this COVID virus. I know recently, we had volunteers help us with the Flower Mountain in the park, and it recently was-
Recent missions.
-need you to mind to perhaps coordinate a little more of that volunteerism and donation to assist our, our greenhouse people. And we'll see where that goes. But you're right, a, a big thank you out to every person that volunteers tie their time and treasure to this city that is perhaps long overdue. Let's make it a, let's make it a point to reach out to them sometime later this year when we have the time and apparently have the inclination to do that. Under items of new business, I, I'd like to share with you all that I have filled a vacancy on our civil service commission with Mr. James Magooki. Mr. Magooki was formerly employed with Civista as their legal counsel and retired from that position two years ago. Mr. Magooki joins our two other members of the civil service commission, Vincent Rose and John May. This fellow, he replaces Marva Jackson, who stepped down. Mr. Magooki's term will end when Marva Jackson's term would have ended on November 22nd of 2020. So, I'm simply announcing that to you now. Any additional items of new business? If there are none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, if you need one.
We are adjourned. Thank you.